Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's continuation of the city council budget hearings. This is the public testimony part. As you can imagine by the number of people in this room, there are many, many people who wish to speak. As we did last time, we are calling, we're going to start off by calling people up in panels. We are asking each person to speak just two minutes. Two minutes. Because, again, of the, of the volume of people who want to testify. So, please, as you come up, be prepared to speak for those two minutes. We have a timer here, which we will stick to as closely as we can. If anyone has written testimony and wished to put, to put it in, that will be made part of the record. And if, when you speak, if you could just summarize your statements. So, with that, I think we're ready to go. And if I could ask everybody, even if you think you're speaking softly, if 40 people are speaking softly, it's not softly anymore, okay? And it's, it's hard to hear in, in this room, even though it's a nice room, it's not the easiest to hear sometimes. So, please, if everybody, if you need to have a conversation, you need to go outside, please. Mr. Stitt, could you call, or if you want me to call?
Yeah, you can call.
Okay, I'll call the first, I'll call the first panel. And if I mess up anybody's name, I apologize. And if you could just come up to the front here, to the table. Joel Naroff, Zachary Alexander, Amy Chen, David Day, and Mazur Shung Thay. And I, again, apologize if I mix, mess up anybody's name. Please, come forward now, please. All right, I think I see five people, that's good. Okay. All right, I call Mr. Naroff first, if he would like to start, or whoever would like to start. Please identify yourself first. And again, two minutes, please.
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, they, they will distribute it. Thank you. Please identify yourself and proceed. Right in the microphone, thank you.
Thank you. My name's Joel Naroff, I'm the president of Naroff Economic Advisors. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to discuss the tax on sugar sweetened beverages. First, let me say, I wholeheartedly support the universal pre-K initiative. It's a crucial educational program. That pre-K is so essential, places huge responsibility on this government to ensure it is adequately funded now and in the future. It cannot be started and stopped, it should not be implemented partially. Consequently, if a dedicated funding source is used, it must be stable and consistent. Given Philadelphia's financial situation, the revenue forecast cannot be overestimated. My research indicates the proposed tax on sugar sweetened beverages will not come close to yielding the funds the mayor has forecasted, and that are needed to provide adequate pre-K programs. In two minutes, I cannot explain all the details. I would be glad to do so at a future council meeting or with you individually. I am willing to publicly debate the estimates with the mayor's team, so council members can decide for themselves the accuracy of the forecasts. For now, let me summarize the key reasons the mayor's estimates are too high. The most important issue is the elasticity, or the decline in demand that will result from a price increase. Without providing a basis, the mayor used an elasticity below the generally accepted RUD Center for Food Policy and Obesity Number. Even the Harvard Health Study used the RUD elasticity. That decision by itself, overestimated revenues by about $120 million over five years. And it is likely, demand will fall farther than what the RUD model estimates, largely because the tax raises the price many times more than experienced in previous studies. And the greater the price increase, the greater the relative impact on demand. Also, the poor who cannot afford the large price hikes constitute the major market for SSBs. The massive price increase will produce even larger cutbacks in the poorest communities. The mayor's estimates don't consider the impact on restaurant sales strategies or avoidance activities that will result from the outside price increases.
Okay, sir, if you could finish.
Okay, I'll be done in about, five seconds. For those and other reasons, the elasticity should be higher, not lower. My research indicates that the SSB tax revenues are likely to fall short by at least 25% and could easily be 40% below forecast, or more than $200 million over five years.
Okay, sir, I'm gonna have to cut you off. Okay, thank you very much, thank you for your cooperation.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Whoever would like to go next, sir, please.
Yeah, Mr. President, council members, on behalf of my 7-11 store and my many Philadelphia 7-11 store honored colleagues, many of whom are there here today, thank you for allowing me to express our concern about the proposed sugar tax beverage. My name is Mazur Chukthay, I own four stores. I have been in 7-11 franchisee for over 29 years. My, one of my stores located at 5800 Rising Sun Avenue. I have 35 employees. There are 67-11 locations that are in city. We are committed to provide the best service to our customer, whom we refer to as a guest. As a 7-11 franchisee, I respectfully ask you to vote against the proposed sugar beverage tax and the syrup tax, both are contained in the budget bill. Here are some of the reasons of my concern. Firstly, the new tax would hurt my beverage sale, increase taxes on our customer. If passed, all the soda sales tax, slurpee sales, all the sales of fruit juice drinks, sports drink, flavored water, energy drinks, and non-alcoholic beverage used with alcohol could be taxed on my store, to affect my store. Currently, there is no tax on any of these beverages. The federal government does not tax these items, and the state does not tax of these beverages. To these proposed, Philadelphia only taxes are high, that our guest customer will be forced to pay more in taxes. There will be the beverage product themselves, the cost of two liter soda bottle would be $2.04 extra. Additionally, if this passes, I will lose important related sale, my guest, who purchased like snacks, personal chips. And we have also the sales increase on the cigarette $2.0 tax in Philadelphia.
Okay, sir, I'm gonna have to ask you to, if you have one more sentence, that's about it.
That affect our sales about 500 to 600 customer a day, about $1600 sale per store on average.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you very much. And I apologize for having to cut people off, but if I let some people go, then some people coming up later and saying you cut me off. So, please, or whoever would like to go next.
Thank you.
Please identify yourself and proceed. Talk right in the microphone, because that's not the brave's microphone.
Thank you. My name is Zach Alexander, I'm a tax partner at Stradler Ronan Stevenson Young in Philadelphia. I'm here on behalf of the American Beverage Association and the beverage industry, bottlers that produce and sell beverages in Philadelphia. We submit that the proposed tax would be in conflict, conflict with the state scheme for taxing the same products, and that this tax is preempted by the state's sales tax. The tax would also violate the uniformity clause of the Pennsylvania Constitution. State preemption, as set forth in the Sterling Act in Philadelphia, is fundamental to the Pennsylvania constitutional structure, and to, and to ensure that state revenues will not be encumbered by local taxation. The proposed tax unlawfully infringes upon an area of state taxation that, that the state has specifically chosen to tax, and threatens to diminish the tax activity. This is the case notwithstanding that the tax is informed, imposed on the distributor rather than the consumer, and that its measure is based on volume rather than price. It would be illogical to conclude that a tax that would otherwise be preempted could be implemented by merely shifting the incidence of the tax, or by devising an alternative scheme. In fact, the mayor's assumptions in proposing this tax contemplate that the tax will in fact be borne by the consumer, by virtue of his estimate of a 55% decline in sales in the first year. We submit the tax would also violate the uniformity requirement in Pennsylvania, that all taxes be uniform on the same classes of product. This tax makes a significant and dramatic distinction between the same class of products. The only purported distinction asserted by proponents is that the sugar beverages promote obesity and health problems. However, that distinction based on health has nothing to do with how beverages are distributed or sold by retailers, which is the class of taxpayers that this tax purports to target.
All right, sir, I'm gonna have to cut you off there, okay?
One more sentence?
One, I'll give you one more sentence.
A health justification for establishing a class distinction would be at odds with the assertion that the tax is not intended to be borne by the customer, and therefore would be subject to preemption. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Amy Chen, and I lead the Pepsi operations in Philadelphia and the tri-state area. I live, work, vote, and pay taxes in Philadelphia. I own a house here, I sit on the board of a nonprofit for education here, and I'm an elder in my church here in Philadelphia. I care about the city and its future. I am here to speak out, though, against this outrageous and discriminatory tax. It would tax beverages that include juice drinks, teas, sports drinks, flavored waters, sodas, over 1,000 products. I've got a 10-page list here that'll enter into the record, but it's shocking. The proposed tax of 3 cents per ounce would more than double the price of many products, as has already been discussed. There's already an 8% sales tax. Where will this end? Many of my customers are immigrants who run small family businesses and are proud members of our community. They will suffer from this tax, as will their customers. Small businesses, you know, run on thin margins and rely on beverages for much of their sales and profits. The impact of a 3 cent per ounce tax would be catastrophic. Customers have told me that they will be forced to lay off employees, or even close. These are heartbreaking conversations. Many consumers will travel outside of the city to buy their beverages and the rest of their groceries, others will buy fewer beverages, and still others may buy from the underground markets that are short to develop. All of this will erode the city's tax base. Let me put this tax in perspective. I employ over 400 hardworking men and women here in Philadelphia, many of whom are here with me today. This tax would be more than double, more than double the amount of all the wages that I pay in the city. No business can absorb this level of taxation. We would be forced to pass it along to our customers, or worse yet, to lay off employees and make other cuts in our operations. I care about the future of Philadelphia, and I care about our kids, but this tax will not deliver the steady revenue stream that our kids deserve. The tax is regressive and unproven. The only thing that is certain is that it will hurt small businesses that form the backbone of our community, and threaten the livelihoods of thousands of hardworking, taxpaying Philadelphians.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, thank you.
I permit you to reject this tax.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is David Day, I'm the owner of the Days Beverage Company. Today we gather in the city of brotherly love. This city, home to many of us for generations, is built on the backs of hardworking, honest, and independent men and women. These hardworking women and men get up every day and give it their best. They care for their children, they support their families, they volunteer in their neighborhoods, and if they have a few bucks left at the end of the day, maybe they could save something for the future. Year after year, the cost of living goes up and up for families everywhere. It never goes down, ever. Housing is more expensive, clothes cost more, gas goes up and down, and grocery bills consume more and more of the average family income. Grocery stores understand this, convenience stores understand this, the competition, the effort, the heart and soul that goes into making sure that, that you, the consumer, the average citizen, is getting the lowest possible price for everyday items is unprecedented. The average citizen of Philadelphia deserves a break. People are being squeezed tighter and tighter, and there is nothing left to squeeze from them. Now, even the things we drink are being arbitrarily made more expensive. A hardworking person wants to buy a cold bottle of soda at the end of a long hot day. Maybe it's the only treat that they can afford. I hate to be the one to tell them that one of the few escapes in life is about to double and triple in price. That's what the grocery tax will do. The cost is always passed down the line, it's economics one-on-one. What happens when the costs go up? People lose their jobs, budgets get stretched even further, economic activity goes down, everybody loses. And if sugar is the enemy, why stop at soda? A large Dunkin' Donuts coffee, cool a tag, contains 990 calories and 125 grams of sugar. If that is going to be taxed as well, what's the nutritional value of a bag of Hers, sour cream, and onion chips? Former mayor Nutter fought rigorously to help save Tasty Cake several years ago. I agree, Tasty Cake is a Philadelphia icon. Should coffee cakes, crimpets, pies, Junior's creamings be taxed too now? It simply isn't fair. Not only to target an individual industry, but doing so that will hurt the poorest amongst us.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you. And again, okay, all right, all right. Okay, thank you. And if any, anybody again has written testimony and want to put the whole thing in, if they didn't have a chance to read it, it will be made part of the record. Our next panel, Jeff Hackett, Idris Gaiten, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing any name wrong, George Matisic, Brian Rankin, and Joanne Fisher. Okay, got five people there, very good, okay. Whoever would like to start, just, okay, there you go. Identify yourself, please, and proceed.
Good evening, I'm Joanne Fisher, the executive director of the Maternity Care Coalition. You may know us as the Mom Mobile or Early Head Start. It will be no surprise to you that we believe that the period of, of pregnancy to age five is the most critical for the future success of children and families. We understand that the mayor's budget proposal to tax sugary beverages is based on what some people call a sin tax, taxing things that are bad for you. These critiques of sin taxes are familiar to us. I can remember testifying when the Pennsylvania Legislature proposed establishing health insurance for children based on tobacco taxes. There were similar arguments and considerations. Advocates were accused of promoting smoking to benefit kids. However, now we realize that this first step was a very important beginning, towards establishing the value and infrastructure of what eventually became the CHIP program. Pennsylvania led the way and became a model for the nation for a program that is currently federally funded. Now, it's Philadelphia's turn to lead the way as a model for universal pre-K.
Yes, it is.
If you see these parallels, I can promise you, we'll be claiming your leadership and early support of the universal pre-K, the way so many of our current politicians fall over each other to tout their role in establishing the CHIP program. I would also like to weigh in on the issue of the advisability of establishing a universal pre-K program.
All right, whoa, 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 one second, one second. To everybody, we'll run the hearing. I don't need any help, please, thank you. Two sentences, two sentences.
I would also like to weigh in on the issue of the advisability of establishing a pre-K program when some communities are much needier than others. We work in those communities, and we need both universality and criteria for selection, like Early Head Start has, that includes.
Thank you, thank you. One second, one second. Let me just say, for those of you who interrupt the person you want to hear with cheers, you're using up their time, okay? Please, identify yourself and proceed.
My name is Idris Gaiten, I'm the parents auxiliary chairperson and a head coach of the Northwest Raiders Athletic Association. Our mission statement is that we use sports as a vehicle to guide the minds and bodies of young people we serve, so that they may become law-abiding contributing members of the community. And since 1971, we've been successful in that mission. In fact, our Division One football team are the Pop Warner national champions for 2015 and 2014. However, at this point in time, we are at a point where we may not have a field to play on due to resource insecurity. We don't have, the rec center can't provide the field, so our national champions may not be able to play and defend their title, and kids who've seen us on TV may not be able to go to their rec centers to try to emulate what we've done. Um, let me see, I'm trying to skip around to be fast.
Okay, that's all right.
Let me see, and I think that's a shame. Our kids have been living and playing with rec center and resource insecurity for some time, but now this at a critical level, and they need intervention. And I know I'm one of many voices on this issue on either side, but the loudest voices in opposition to this have degrees, investment portfolios, rainy day funds, transferable work experience, and will land on their feet. So, in truth, this should be about the kids, or the people who will, when dropped, will land on their backs. This, or the ones who have no safety net. When, I think about the soda tax, the soda tax, I think about the children who will help. Think about the national champions, think about the kids who want to be like the national champions, think about those who just want a place to have a safe, playful environment. That's what I think about. Muddied interests will always have a loud voice, they will always have a seat at the table. Now, I want the kids to have a seat at that same table, and their voice to be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Brian Rankin, I'm the father of a seven-year-old boy and a Fairmount resident. I'm here to ask you to support the mayor's budget, and specifically to support pre-K funding. My wife and I moved here over 10 years ago and love Philadelphia. It is now our forever home, our son's hometown, and we want to make Philadelphia a city where everyone, regardless of economic position or community, can thrive. We want our city to place a priority on education. Pre-K is critical to creating successful learners, and ultimately, a successful city. Every child deserves a great education and the opportunity that comes from it. My son attended pre-K because we knew he would developmentally benefit, and because we could afford it. The children whose parents cannot afford it deserve pre-K just as much, and deserve a chance at educational achievement just as much. Education achievement gaps create inequities that can last years, if not lifetimes, and have impacts on our society and economy. Education investment must start early, before any achievement gap becomes too wide or too costly to overcome. My wife and I want our son to grow up in a city where his playmates have the same possibilities he has. We want him to grow up in a city where the starting line can be the same for all children, no matter their zip code, or what job their parents have. The only realistic way to fund this critical initiative is with the proposed sugary drinks tax. I am not anti-soda or other beverages, and would prefer no additional taxes. But existing education revenues are not available, and pre-K benefits are clear and compelling. It is an imperative for our city's children and our future that this funding be provided. Thank you.
Council President, Chair, Jeff Hackett. I'm not here really as a grandstander, I'm totally grassroots. I'm president of Sturgis Advisory Board, I sit currently on the Commission for Parks and Recreation, I sit on the Police Advisory Board. I'm here as a 25-year volunteer advocate for children. I grew up in the 7th District, I live in the 9th District, my councilwoman's over there. I don't know how many of you have seen a child that can't play football because they have weight on them. Did you see that face, where they can't do certain things because, like our playground was going to be closed down 10 years ago? It took $5.4 million to bring back a facility. Every field in the area needs to be addressed because they're unsafe for children. I stand here in front of you and applaud you, those of you that oppose this tax, come volunteer with us, look at these faces, look at this 28 pounds I lost since January just by cutting out sugar. My life has changed drastically. And real quickly, I would like to say to the big four, we've approached you on several occasions, your fundraising would cost our kids money rather than help them. We're talking facts, this is not about business, this is about the area where I took a whole team of drug dealers, three of them went to college. If we didn't have a rec center, they would not be here today. I am, I want to thank you, I want to thank you, and I want to thank everybody that comes down and volunteers for a kid.
Thank you, Jeff. Sir, please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, council, my name is George Matisic, I'm executive director of the Philadelphia Parks Alliance. I'm also a former Teamster, okay? I grew up in a Teamster family, I'm proud of my Teamster family, okay? But I came up old school, in the Johnny Morris days, and Mr. Morris used to say, "Unions don't fight for the haves, unions fight for the have-nots." Now, we're looking at this today, I'm looking at the, at the Morningstar today, right? Top five executives at Coke and Pepsi make $95 million, $95 million, that's enough to pay for this tax by itself, and not share it out with my communities, or with you, with you guys working on the front lines. Yet they're trying to use these fear tactics, saying my union brothers and sisters are going to lose their job. Tell my communities that they're going to tax their groceries, not their soda, their groceries. The have-nots, let's talk about the have-nots. The have-nots are the kids going to crumbling rec centers, the kids waiting in line for the pre-K, not enough seats for pre-K. The one in three kids living in poverty in this city, we're not going to fix that problem by giving them more soda, we're going to fix that problem by giving them more opportunities, and that's exactly what this soda tax goes to. I know, I know you all in council, I know you all appreciate this, you've been out to the rec centers, you've been out to the parks, you've been to the libraries, to the pre-K, I know that you all appreciate the need out there.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have to cut you off, yeah. Okay, our next panel, Charles, listen up now, please. Charles Hall, Mercy Moskara, Stephanie Sotong, Juan Wu, and Sobhan Chatsky. I hope I made your names recognizable, sorry. One, two, three, four, there's five, okay, very good. Whoever would like to start, please identify yourself and proceed.
Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Stephanie Sotong, and I'm a millennial living in one of the fastest-growing millennial cities in this country, and I am greatly opposed to this beverage tax. For the past three years, I've been a manager with the Coca-Cola Company, but that's not the only reason this beverage tax keeps me up at night. I love Philadelphia. I've lived in the East Paschuk neighborhood for the past five years, and I just finished my MBA at Temple University. As I think of the future and about buying a house and starting a family, I'm concerned about the amount of taxes I already pay, and can't help but wonder what's next. This discriminatory tax will impact any beverage that includes added sugar. This discriminatory tax will impact any beverage that includes added sugar, including juice drinks, sports drinks, sodas, teas, and energy drinks. At $0.3 per ounce, that means there'll be a $4.32 tax on a 12-pack and a $1.92 tax on a gallon of tea. That's double the original cost. The public needs to understand that this is $0.3 per ounce, not 3%, and not $0.3 per bottle. Philadelphians cannot tolerate any additional taxes on beverages, especially since the city's 8% sales tax already applies to beverages. Millennial aside, as a manager at a company that provides more than 700 above-minimum-wage paying jobs in this country, I'm afraid for the roughly 120 employees I manage. My associates have entry-level jobs that can open doors for lifelong careers. What happens to them if the water and diet soda sales the administration say will increase do not? How do we have conversations with them to inform them that we're doing layoffs? And what do they say to their children who depend on the money they work so hard to bring home? This tax is not about Atlanta, it is about Philadelphia, the home to the men and women standing in this room behind me tonight. We work for companies that have served the Philadelphia community for over 100 years. Please think about us when considering whether or not to support this tax.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name's Mercy Moskara, and we own a restaurant in North Philadelphia with more than 100 employees every year. For more than 25 years, we are witnesses of a poor improvement in our neighborhood. Schools are being closed, not safety parks for our kids, but we do pay taxes too, where the money goes. Witnesses of how many times and amounts of taxes are increased all the time. How much might community grow up? Zero. So, who is receiving these benefits? Coming from a poor and abandoned neighbor, it's not fair for me paying more taxes. This is unfair when we have to work more than 15 hours per day to make sure that we pay these taxes and make a little bit for us. It is time to stop. Don't make us to close our doors. North Philadelphia restaurants and grocery stores are against this increased taxes.
Hello, my name is Shobhan Chotsky, and I manage two gas stations in Philadelphia, one on Spring Garden Avenue and one on City Avenue. And, you know, I don't have hundreds of employees, I have about 10, 15 employees between them, and this tax will greatly hurt my business. As of October of 2014, when the cigarette tax came, a lot of the fellow owners here of small businesses like myself, they were greatly impacted. I lost over $40,000 in revenues between the two stores. I laid off four full-time employees, along with laying off one part-time employee. And those are real people, real lives, those are people, those are husbands, wives, taxpayers, and they have families too. And when we have to lay off employees because the revenues are down, at that time, who's winning, right? So, I understand everybody wants to help the kids, and so do we, so do all of the people standing here. Everybody in this room wants to help kids. That's not the issue. The issue is, this is going to hurt small business owners, and you see the trickle-down effect on many different levels. It's not like people who come into our store for soda or an energy drink or a juice, though they, those are the things that bring them into the store. When those customers leave us, there goes our gas sales, there goes our lottery sales, there goes our gum sales. All those things get impacted. So, I would please, like you to please vote no on this tax. It's going to impact us greatly, and I hope you guys all see that.
Hello. My name is Charles Hall, and I was born and raised in Philly.
I'm sorry. What's your name again? I'm sorry.
Charles Hall.
Charles.
Hall. I was born and raised in Philadelphia. I love all pockets of the city, but North Philadelphia, right by Temple, is my area home, is my home area and source of my livelihood. I manage at the Pearl Theater at Avenue North. I have worked there for about six years and currently manage about 15 associates. In addition to providing for myself, I also primarily care for, and a giver, a primary caregiver for my brothers. The Pearl Theater is not just about our community, it's about caring for our families. The majority of our ticket sales at the Pearl Theater goes to Hollywood. We rely on our concession sales to stay in business. Beverages make up most of our bottom line, which is a big deal for us. If these taxes pass, we would be forced to pay a huge tax of $0.3 per ounce on bottled beverages and $0.45 per ounce on fountain beverages. It's hard enough to bring people into the theaters these days. The last thing we need is customers stop buying beverages and end up sneaking them in. Either way--
Excuse me, sir. Folks, could you all keep it down over there, please? Thank you. Sorry, sorry.
No problem. Either way, this is a major impact to our bottom line. We already have, we already paid five different taxes just by being in a movie theater in Philly. The last tax we made, this last tax may be the last one that shuts us down, so please find another way to fund these programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Juan Wu. I'm the, I immigrated here in Philadelphia about 40 years ago, and I went to school here, and I still live here in the city, and I have a business in the city. And I'm just proud to be a serving member of the CAW, which is Korean-American Grocery Association. I'm the member of theirs, about 700 represented to here tonight. And Philadelphia taxes are already making it hard to be run, so successful, successful business that can provide for my families. I have to pay a number of taxes in my businesses already, and businesses makes us to be part of our business. Business, if I have to raise price for this tax, we are losing lots of revenues. People will buy beverage outside of the city because of this tax. This will hurt my, our business and all of the other wonderful businesses and employee who has in the city. People will lose jobs as small business owners and is unsettling decisions, but it's, but it's true. If this tax passes, small business owners will have to make some hard decisions. People will drink less, and that will have consequence on jobs. I have no doubt that many businesses will close if this tax is passed. I will be very fearful about this features and stability of our business and stability of our families too. Please, don't pass this tax. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next panel. Gabe Morgan, Stephen Larson, Minister Rodney Muhammad, Benjamin Miller, and Patricia Aiken.
Good evening. You guys can choose who goes first.
Good evening, Council. My name is Gabe Morgan. I'm the Vice President of the Service Employees International Union Local 32BJ. I'm here representing all of SEIU, which has 19,000 members who live and work in the city of Philadelphia and is, we believe, the largest union in the city of Philadelphia. And we support the sugary drink tax. I want to explain why, though. I think everyone in this room, and we had an election about this, in which people voted, everyone in this room supports community schools, everyone in this room supports the need for pre-K, everyone in this room knows the need that we have for rec centers in Philadelphia. Our members who are the social workers in Philadelphia, the people who clean and maintain those schools, the ones who drive those kids to and from work in buses, we know the need that we have. And we know that the only way to fund this is through the sugar tax. You can't raise real estate taxes anymore. Our members are already being gentrified out of the neighborhoods they live in by millennials who are coming in and raising property prices in their neighborhoods. You can't do more income taxes on workers, you can't levy more direct taxes on small businesses. We need these things, and the city needs to fund them. And the reason why the city has to fund them is because the state won't tax rich people and the federal government won't tax rich people. And even as we sit in here today, a tax that is actually on corporations, a tax that is on distributors, one where their lawyer came in here to clarify today, is a tax on distributors, on corporations, corporations that make billions of dollars a year. They're threatening to pass that on to Philadelphia consumers, they're threatening to pass it on to workers. Corporations like Pepsi and Coke are saying, "We'll lay off all of our workers if you tax us." These are not the people you should be listening to. Listen to the kids in Philadelphia who need these things. Thank you.
Folks, folks. Okay, so, hold on a second, Minister. Hold on a second. All right, folks, I know that you all may be in the balcony. All right, this is the way it's going to work. People have an opportunity to say what they have to say, all right, and I'm asking you all to be respectful. If you're not going to be respectful, then you may have to leave, all right? So please, be respectful. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Minister.
Good afternoon. I'm Minister Rodney Muhammad, President of the NAACP, Minister of Mass Number 12. We understand that these are difficult times, and equally so, the decisions we come to are difficult decisions, but both the time and the decision-making has both come to Philadelphia. I want to say that I support this tax at the level of distributorship. These dollars at the distributorship level represent money that will not be redistributed in Philadelphia, will not be reinvested in Philadelphia. I want to say that I support this because the marketing concentration, the advertising is fiercely greater in the low-income zip code areas. The studies have already revealed this, especially in neighborhoods where they are populated by citizens of color. These are neighborhoods where people are trapped in cycles of poverty, and the cry that the poor are going to be unduly burdened by this tax. If you bring some of those plants back from overseas, trying to escape their American worker and put the plants here where they can make the sodas, maybe the people wouldn't be poor. Just a few notes. Milk, eggs, groceries, milk, eggs, bread, they represent groceries. A non-nutritional drink is not groceries, it's an option. Let me say this, that the poor are expected to be burdened, and they would not be poor if they had work here, but the reality is that 90% of a child's brain develops between three and five years old. I'm here because the three, four, five-year-olds can't come here to represent themselves. We cannot squander this crucial period in a child's development, so it doesn't leave us room with a lot of options. Our failure to do something with the three-to-five-year-olds at this time will cost this city the next 20 years on the misery tax. The same period will save us 36,000-- Well, let me just say this. Let me just say this. In this fight to save our children, be a protector, don't be a parasite, bear your share of the load.
Please proceed, sir.
My name's Steve Larson. I'm a professor of emergency medicine at the University of Pennsylvania and a co-founder of a community clinic, Pointe des Deux Ludes. Looking around this room, I can tell you the stats. One in 10 of you are diabetics. The other three to four out of 10 are prediabetics, and you don't even know it. Almost 50% of our country, and it's an epidemic that's growing. Now, if I applied the logic and reasoning that I've heard in testimony before, that business is good, I, as a physician, wouldn't be here testifying, and I would say no to this tax law. But deep down in my heart and soul, it's not about, you know, the pharmaceutical industry gaining more market share, it's not about the hospital filling its bed, it's not about me and the emergency department being busy. That generates jobs, that generates money, but that's a warped way of looking at what we're doing here. We're in charge of the wellness and health of these communities, and by advocating more access to sugar in large quantities, maybe that's not the right idea. As an ER doc who's resuscitated 15-year-old gunshot victims, 17-year-old kids, in a community where up to 26% poverty level, unemployment that is jacked through the ceiling, deep poverty, the city has long-term problems, and they start with children. I don't want to see those kids in my ER. I want to keep them out of my ER. When you look at a school system like Philadelphia and the product that comes out after 12 years that can't be marketable, that's a problem that collectively we all share. We got to keep these kids healthy, we got to keep them well, and that sometimes costs. It costs all of us. I say yes to this tax law because I don't want to meet those kids in my ER. I want them to go into kindergarten knowing their alphabet, ready to read, ready to be productive members. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Good evening, members of Council, and thank you for allowing me to testify. My name is Patricia Aiken. I'm a registered nurse for 40 years. I've been a public health nurse and most recently, an ER nurse at Temple for the last 17 years. I'm also president of my union, PASNAP, the Pennsylvania Association of Staff Nurses and Allied Professionals. We represent 8,000 nurses and allied professionals, and recently, we're joined by 3,000 new members from the Philadelphia area hospitals. I'm here to say that PASNAP wholeheartedly supports Mayor Kenny's proposal to tax sugary drinks. His plan to use the money for community schools, universal pre-K, and to improve the recreation centers is a necessary and laudable endeavor. If Philadelphia is to be a great city, rather than the poorest big city in America, we must do something to improve the school system and give our children a chance to succeed. It's clear we can't wait for Harrisburg to correct the inequitable funding or restore the cuts of the previous governor. We have to take matters into our own hands to address the problems until something more lasting and with greater and more equitable funding can be established. I would prefer to address how the city's nonprofits avoid taxation, or perhaps challenge Comcast to pay more, but these are not options that our children can wait for. And this tax could also have the important benefit of improving the health of Philadelphians, which a study by Harvard suggests will surely happen. They show that over 10 years, diabetes could be reduced by 2,800 cases, obesity by 36,000 cases, and could save 730 lives and lots of money. As a nurse, I see the devastation and personal suffering caused by these diseases and their sequelae, like high blood pressure, kidney failure, and a life of dialysis, heart attacks, heart failure, et cetera. If any of these cases can be prevented and reduced, then it is a win for all of us. If we can simultaneously fund public education and support our children, that's even better for the whole city. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Miller. I'm a restaurant owner. The restaurant's called South Philly Barbecue with my wife, and I'm in support of Mayor Kenny's tax. I voted for him, and I trust his leadership, and sometimes we have to make a sacrifice and take a hard decision, that's something better for the community. We wouldn't be in business if it wasn't for our community, and so, for me to complain that I might sell less sodas is kind of selfish when all the benefits that this tax would provide for the community is more important. And my other point that I wanted to make is that people are still going to buy sodas. Cigarettes are really expensive, and people still buy them. Cigarettes are really expensive, and people still buy them. So I might sell more juices, I might sell more water, and I want to sell... Yeah, I sell fresh juice. Okay.
Just talk. You done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Don't engage with the audience, you'll never win that.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I'm it, that's it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel is Miguel Martinez, Josh West, Lorelei Mores, Ben Vanita Jimenez, and Steve Tang.
Pardon me? Oh, okay, okay. I was counting. That's where I remember you, you guys, okay.
I seen you.
All right. Please proceed.
Mi nombre es...
My name is...
Miguel Martinez.
Miguel Martinez.
Presidente de la Asociación Dominicana de Comerciantes.
President of the Association of Dominican Stores.
Nosotros representamos...
We represent...
...alrededor de un promedio de más de tres mil quinientos...
Over three thousand grocery stores.
Tiendas. Pero además...
Even though...
...de nosotros dependen cientos de familias.
And on behalf of hundreds of families, it depends upon us.
Nosotros entendemos...
We understand...
...que la ciudad de Filadelfia...
That the city of Philadelphia...
...o el consejo municipal...
Or the council...
...no está pensando en la clase de poseída...
Is not thinking of the possession of its taken place.
...de la ciudad de Filadelfia.
Of the city of Philadelphia.
La ciudad de Filadelfia...
The city of Philadelphia...
...ha estado aumentando...
Has been raising...
...constantemente los impuestos. Primero los impuestos de la propiedad...
Taxes of the homes.
Cuatro puntos cinco por ciento.
Four point six percent.
Después la electricidad...
Electric.
Tres punto noventa y cinco por ciento.
Three point ninety-five percent.
La, el gas...
The gas.
Ochenta centavo por factura.
Eighty cents for a fact.
Y así sistemáticamente ha ido aumentando.
And systematically, then you'll be raising taxes.
Nosotros entendemos...
We understand...
...que ustedes necesitan pensar...
That you have to think.
...y poner el corazón en los oídos del pueblo.
And put your heart into the ears of the people.
La ciudad de Filadelfia...
To the city of Philadelphia.
...es una ciudad pobre.
It's a poor city.
Y dentro de las diez ciudades...
And in between the ten cities...
...de los Estados Unidos...
Of the United States.
...con los impuestos más elevados...
With the highest taxes.
...la ciudad de Filadelfia...
The city of Philadelphia.
...ocupa el cuarto lugar.
Makes number four.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Mi nombre es Bienvenida Jimenez.
Bienvenida Jimenez is my name. Welcome, council.
Buenas tardes para todos.
Good evening for everyone.
Quería expresarle que...
I would like to express...
Yo, este, soy la que maneja una grocery store.
I am the one that manages una tienda.
Justamente donde vive María Quiñones.
Right with the facility where María Quiñones lives.
Ella conoce el neighborhood de nosotros.
She knows our neighborhood.
Y sabe bien...
Knows real good.
...la clase de persona que nosotros tenemos como clientes.
The class of people that we have as customers.
Como dueño de grocery store, nosotros...
Como dueño de grocery store.
Nosotros somos familia...
We are also a family.
...de nuestro neighborhood.
De nuestra vecindad.
Realmente queremos que los, que ustedes...
Truly, we would like for you guys to...
...se pongan en los zapatos de nosotros por un día.
To put yourself in our shoes for one day.
Nosotros trabajamos quince y dieciséis horas...
We worked fifteen and sixteen hours.
Diario.
Daily.
En siete días de la semana.
And seven days of the week.
Nosotros pagamos taxes...
We pay taxes.
...como nadie. Y estamos sobreviviendo...
And we are overs living.
...en un neighborhood que también va a ser muy afectado.
In a neighborhood that is gonna be really affected.
Igual que nosotros.
Just like us.
No sé qué va a pasar...
I don't know what's gonna take place.
Si los taxes, si esta, si esta ley pasa...
I don't know what's gonna take place if the taxes do pass.
Porque gente como yo...
People like myself.
...como mi esposo...
My husband.
...como mi, mi customer...
Or my vecindad.
No sé qué va a pasar con ellos.
I don't know what's gonna take place.
Porque ellos no pueden ir a comprar...
They cannot afford.
...los jugos, los jugos que se supone que son nutritivos...
The juices that are gonna be nutrition.
Que van a costar, también tienen azúcar.
They're gonna cost high because they got sugar too.
Los helados que también tienen azúcar.
The ice cream, they also got sugar.
Y todo tiene azúcar.
And everything has sugar.
Y con la comunidad y con Filadelfia, no sé...
And by the community of Philadelphia...
Yo no sé realmente qué va a pasar.
I don't know what's gonna take place.
Porque la gente se va a ir para New Jersey or to any other place.
People might go to New Jersey or go somewhere else.
A comprar lo que ellos desean tomar.
What they would like to drink as well. Okay.
Todo el mundo... Todo el mundo ama a los niños.
Everybody loves the children.
Pero yo creo que lo de, lo de que los niños van aquí siendo la parte primordial de todo, todo la mano.
What the people are truly trying to see is for the children to stay home.
Pero es cuestión de educación, y son los padres los que tienen que educar a los niños.
Okay.
So, por favor, no pasen esos taxes.
Please, don't pass these taxes.
Filadelfia va a volver a los años de atrás.
Because Philadelphia's gonna go to the next years that we used to be before.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, I'm the interpreter. May I have a word?
No, let these other...
Let the minister.
You weren't listed as a speaker?
I would, yeah, I just would like to say two things.
Let these other...
Yeah, let them speak.
So they were listed as speakers.
Good evening, Council President Clark, and thank you to all council members present for allowing me to speak. My name is Joshua Solomon West, and I'm twenty-seven years old. I was born and raised in Mount Airy, and I attended Northwestern University, where I obtained my undergraduate degree. Prior to graduation, I was accepted into Coca-Cola's two-year rotational leadership program that landed me back in Philly two years ago. I have a great-paying job that allows me to work with business owners and lead a team of passionate, dedicated sales associates across Philadelphia. With the news of this proposed three-cent-per-ounce tax on all juices, sports drinks, teas, amongst others, I am frightened for my customers and for the families we know they work so hard to support. We know that this tax will drive business outside of Philadelphia, forcing local businesses into economic hardship, and ultimately hurting the city's revenue stream. Now, I'm no economist, but I minored in business, and I can tell you that basic economic principle states that any tax on supply and demand creates a deadweight loss due to a reduced amount of mutually beneficial transactions between buyers and sellers. This loss stems from that forgone economic activity. Now, let me ask you, how can you create, or how can you fund a program on forgone economic activity? Now, I'm here this evening because this is very important to me, my colleagues, and to the customers and families we serve each and every day. Pre-kindergarten is a positive, desirable, and a critical goal to consider. I myself am the product of pre-kindergarten education. But if consumers stop buying beverages in Philadelphia, the tax will not generate the revenue needed to fund it. Ultimately, the program will fail, and the city of Philadelphia will continue to fail these kids in the audience here tonight. Please, I implore you, find another way to fund these programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Lorelei Motise, representing the Wakefern Food Corporation. You know us as ShopRite and the Fresh Grocers. There are currently thirteen ShopRites and five Fresh Grocers in the city. We employ approximately forty-five hundred associates and support numerous charitable organizations, including local food banks, nonprofit organizations, schools, police, fire, and recreation departments, youth teams, local churches, and synagogues. We are families serving families in Philadelphia. If passed, this tax will more than double the price of beverages in Philadelphia grocery stores, driving up the cost for consumers and driving away business. We estimate that the new tax will impact over two thousand beverages in our ShopRites and cost consumers tens of millions of dollars. The proposed tax is the highest in the nation, and we believe it's a regressive tax that will disproportionately hurt Philadelphia residents and businesses. Current and past members of the council and local community business leaders have fought hard over the years to bring full-service grocery stores into the city and to eliminate food deserts. Imposing a tax like this has the potential to undo all of that work. We in the community have accomplished a lot. You need to know that our customers won't just stop purchasing the newly taxed items in the cities. They will simply stop purchasing many food items at the grocery stores. Many are struggling to make ends meet and will be forced to travel across city lines. All of the hard work that we have accomplished, the jobs that we have provided, and the progress that we have made will be for nothing if our stores are no longer financially viable.
Thank you.
We ask you to...
Hi, my name is Stephen Tang, and I represent ALVA, Asian American Lifestyle Bettering Association. I would like to say that I'm here to state that the three-cent tax will adversely affect our business. As we saw how cigarette tax has hurt a lot of businesses in the city, having people stand in front of our business selling corns and loose cigarettes alike, how can we, how can we compete with the surrounding counties when they don't have to pay for a single cent in taxes? How can we compete with the two-dollar difference? This soda tax would do the same. It creates an uneven playing field for businesses in Philadelphia to compete against the surrounding counties. This bill will not only hurt businesses, but also consumers alike. Most of our neighbors are low-income families. This bill will hurt them the most. Why do we have to pay more than everybody else in the state to enjoy a beverage of our choice? New York, a richer city, couldn't pass this bill. They know the bill won't work. What makes you think that Philadelphia is a city with more low-income families can afford this increase? This bill will create more illegal activities on the street without paying taxes. Please stop supporting bills that hurt us more than help us. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you all for your testimony. You didn't get on the list. Our next panel, we have Dwayne Walker, Kate Sundine, Jonathan Kirsch, Steve Ray with a W, and Robert Enman. Ready? Good evening.
Good evening, Universal Pre-K Commission, esteemed commissioner and all. Hello, my name is Dwayne Walker. I come as a proud father of four daughters, a single father with four daughters, six grands. All three of, three of my daughters use Universal Pre-K, and they all graduated with top, at top of their classes. And my fifteen-year-old used Universal Pre-K, and here's Stark, and she's on the honor roll. One of our most precious treasures that lie within our nation are our children. When we deny their basic civil rights of educating all of them, we are not only sending a message that they do not matter, hence, we are also diminishing the likelihood of raising the future of healthy, well-being, well-balanced human beings that we are expected to pass the torch and take over the reins of society. We need Universal Pre-K, and we needed it yesterday. I'm not gonna beat you in the head with statistics because I passed, I gave in my testimony for statistics. Parents must understand the importance of quality ECE as well as understanding developmental milestone. In closing, I thank you for allowing me to share my very passionate testimony. In the words of Mandela, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." This is, this is a sad day that a dollar and a soda is being put before our children's education. It's a sad day. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good evening, Council President Clark and members of City Council. I'm Steve Ray, Executive Director of the Economy League of Greater Philadelphia. I appreciate the opportunity provided by council to testify on behalf of the mayor's proposal to invest in expanded, high-quality pre-K, new community schools, revitalized recreation and library facilities, new energy savings programs, and in reducing the city's pension burden. Taken together, the investments represent a transformative investment in future growth and opportunity for the city's children, residents, and communities. While I applaud all these efforts, let me focus briefly on my favorite, investing in high-quality pre-K. This investment will give every three- and four-year-old in the city the opportunity to enter school ready to learn, and that will help to increase educational performance, reduce expenses of special education costs, reduce costs of social services and incarceration, and provide a better-trained workforce for city employers. All in all, a strong return on investment. So where do we find the money for big new ideas? No tax is perfect, but the mayor's proposed sugary drink tax is likely to have minimal short-term impact on the city's overall business climate while it helps to advance these crucial investments in education in neighborhoods. It's also on a product that's already facing decreasing consumption due to shifts in consumer behavior and the introduction of alternative, healthier beverages which will replace sugary drinks for many. In addition, the city's revenue projections sensibly include reductions in consumption over the five-year plan due to both price sensitivity of consumers and general reductions in consumption. It will be important for the administration and council to monitor the impact in the early years and make adjustments in revenue projections based not just on the imposition of the tax, but the long-term trend away from sugary drinks and toward more healthy alternatives. As well, it will be important to be sure that there are sufficient operating revenues available to fund these important new activities. For me, the benefits of the investment outweigh concerns about this revenue source, and I encourage you to consider all of this as you weigh your choice. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good evening, President and members of the City Council. My name is Kate Sundine. I am a proud teacher for the School District of Philadelphia and a proud member of the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers. I'm here to encourage you not only to adopt the sugary drinks tax, but to also think deeply about how you disperse the money that is meant to help our struggling schools. I currently teach at Academy at Palumbo, but for many years I taught at Overbrook High School in West Philly. One year, I asked my students to write about the fact that just on the other side of City Line Avenue, Lower Marion was building two new high schools, even though the existing buildings were not even fifty years old. While on our side, plaster was falling on our head from crumbling ceilings, and water fountains were blocked off because the safety of the water couldn't be guaranteed. of the water couldn't be guaranteed. Try and guess their response. They said, "Miss Sundine, they're suburban school. That's the way it's supposed to be." This broke my heart, and it still does. These conditions have been like this for so long that our students believe that somehow it's fair and right. Sadly, the state of the district has only gotten worse, and it is unacceptable to say, "Well, they're a wealthy district." It is morally reprehensible to provide our students with less when we have the tools to solve the problem of the money. Why choose to doom our students who start out at a disadvantage to a lifetime of playing catch-up with students from districts like Lower Marion? I'm one of the coaches for Palumbo's Speech and Debate Team. While we get assistance from after-school activities partnerships, they help many schools in many activities, and their funds will only stretch so far. There are prestigious competitions we can't afford to go to. This is horrible because top-tier colleges scouted these competitions, which means that our students miss out on acceptances and scholarships just because we can't afford to go. I spent $4,000 last year supplying my classroom with supplies and sending my students to these competitions. Do what's right for our students and adopt this tax.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Robert Inman. I'm a professor of finance and economics at the Wharton School at the University of Pennsylvania. I realize you're pressed for time, and I would like to testify on behalf of the mayor's proposal and do so by making six points. Point number one is speaking as an economist, as I will in my testimony. The pre-K program is unambiguously a financial winner. The returns for dollars spent are on the order of $6 to $10 return for every dollar spent. The benefits of the Philadelphia pre-K program, as I estimate them, will be annually on the order of $1.2 to $2 billion a year. Over the lifetime of the program, that can be as much as $12 to $20 billion in benefits for the city of Philadelphia. The program is, I think, a terrific program, but one has to pay for it, and the question is then going to look for taxes that I would argue need to do the least damage to the Philadelphia economy. The soda tax is the mayor's proposal. I've done analysis based on estimates that have been mentioned earlier with regard to the responsiveness of the marketplace to changes in price. My estimates suggest that the tax needed, $100 million tax in revenues, the impact on the soda industry would be somewhere between $180 million to perhaps $140 million a year. Those are high estimates, but estimates nonetheless. The important issue for me is that any taxes, again, has been mentioned by some of your previous speakers, is going to have an adverse effect on the economy. So the question really is to look for the tax that does the least damage. I've considered the three taxes. I'll be very brief. The gross receipts, the wage tax, and the property tax. If one were to look at the overall implications, unambiguously, the gross receipts tax is the worst, the wage tax the next worst, the property the least worst, and then the least worst of all the taxes will be the soda tax. There is no question in my mind that the benefits from this program clearly dominate the costs, and the mayor's proposal is unambiguously the best proposal of all alternatives.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, and good evening, Council President Clark, Leader Heenan, and members of council. My name is Jonathan Kirsch. I'm here on behalf of the American Heart Association and American Stroke Association. Our office is located at Suburban Station on the seventh floor, and we are here tonight to wholeheartedly ask council to vote yes to levy a tax on sugar-sweetened beverages to fund investments in pre-K, parks, and rec centers across the city. No one needs to recite the case for pre-K to this council. You've seen the public support, the polls, and the need couldn't possibly be more acute and obvious, but there are three great reasons why this is the right revenue source. First, this council and the people of this city have exhausted their appetite for other taxes, whether they be property taxes, sales taxes, or wage taxes. Second, Philadelphia is staring right in the face of a diabetes epidemic that threatens the lives of many thousands of city residents, and this policy will undoubtedly stem the rising tide of diabetic amputations, gangrene, blindness, and other horrifying complications from this largely preventable disease. The modeling and forecasting is extremely compelling. Lives will be saved, thousands of deaths will be averted. Lastly, most importantly, this revenue measure and the programs it will fund will have an outsized benefit for the Philadelphians who need it the most. Our diabetes epidemic rages fieryest in the poorest neighborhoods, and predictably, the reductions in diseases and complications from this disease will accrue most in those same neighborhoods, and the investments in pre-K parks and rec centers target the social determinants of health. When you add these reductions together in diabetes and heart disease with better educational opportunities and outcomes for our youngest and most vulnerable, it's a one-two punch at some of the largest contributors to some of this city's most serious health and social problems.
Wrap it up, sir.
I'm speaking on behalf of more than sixty organizations who were cut from testimony tonight. Please vote yes.
Thank you for your testimony. All right. I believe a slight change of pace. We have Pamela Winkler, Richard Gitton, and David Fair testifying on the DHS budget. Am I correct? And we actually do have a budget beyond the sugar tax on a whole lot of stuff, $4 billion worth of stuff we have to make decisions on, separating the side from the sugar tax. You all are testifying on DHS budget?
Yeah, the Philadelphia Department of Customs.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Council President Clark, members of City Council, and our community partners. My name is Pamela Winkler, too. I work for the Pennsylvania Council of Children, Youth, and Family Services, a statewide association of private provider agencies. I am based in our Philadelphia office. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the DHS budget. Our first recommendation is to adequately and appropriately resource the provider agencies that have been charged with implementing the Improving Outcomes for Children Initiative. The current fiscal model for IOC does not support service delivery positioned to achieve the stated outcomes and ensure the safety, permanency, and well-being of children and their families. At this time, COA budgets support one case manager for every thirteen families, which in some cases equates to almost thirty children. This ratio is too high, especially considering that COA workers are responsible for providing services to families with present safety threats who must be seen on a weekly basis. The caseload size does not align with national standards of twelve to fifteen children or six to seven families per caseworker. This overwhelming workload has been cited as a reason for high turnover among COA workers. We support a community-based practice model, but desired outcomes cannot be achieved if case managers don't have the resources to complete their work. A COA analysis reports there has been at least 20% decrease in services. This has a very real impact on children and their families. A child in foster care is now visited by a case manager 50% less than they were pre-IOC. The goal of IOC was to clarify roles and responsibilities and not to reduce the services to children and families while increasing the overall workforce. Additionally, agencies that subcontract with the COAs must have their roles clearly defined to best support children in their placement settings, and they need to be resourced to do so. The $103 million, which comes from the city's general fund, must be redistributed so dollars are directed toward supporting quality services. For years, our second recommendation is to amend the city charter, require contracts for mandated services to automatically extend beyond one year at the last contracted rate until a new contract agreement is signed. We have met with some of you and hope to meet with all council members in the coming weeks to discuss the issue further. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for your testimony. You've got no cheers for your testimony, eh?
Good evening. My name is David Fair, and I'm Deputy Chief Executive Officer for Turning Points for Children. I am testifying today to strongly encourage City Council to support the budget proposed by Mayor Kenny for the Department of Human Services. I also request that this budget be amended to include $28 million in additional funds to support the thousands of children in the care of Philadelphia's child welfare system. About one-third of the DHS budget is invested in the Improving Outcomes for Children Initiative. Among those receiving these funds are over forty community foster care agencies and ten community umbrella agencies, supporting over 13,000 children. While there have been many implementation challenges in the first three years of IOC, the bottom line is that the IOC initiative is achieving results that are as good or better than what was being achieved under the old model. These results include increasing rates of reunifications and adoptions, improved rates of placing children with relative caregivers rather than strangers, keeping children in their own neighborhoods, keeping siblings together, and reducing congregant care, each a critical measure of a successful child welfare system. But today, the system and its children are overwhelmed. Caseloads for social workers that should be at eight families or sixteen children are more likely at fourteen and fifteen families with thirty-two to thirty-five children. These caseloads are untenable and very risky and are the primary reason why the true promise of IOC has not yet been realized. We ask council to fully fund IOC so that the caseloads can be reduced. Money can't solve all problems, but in this case, everybody knows that the money we all thought would be there for IOC when it was rolled out simply isn't. While DHS continues to negotiate to obtain adequate funding from state government, we need to stand up and say that if the state won't help, someone else has to. Like it or not, that someone is the members of City Council. We beg you to use your authority to allocate city general funds wisely by spending them to give a chance for a safe and healthy future to thousands of children in DHS care. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, sir.
Good evening, Council President Clark, members of City Council, and our community partners. My name is Rich Gitlin. I am the Executive Director of Lutheran Children Family Service. LCFS is a longstanding agency, has provided over ninety-five years of service to children and families in the community. We were established in 1922 to provide foster care to immigrant children and one of the first agencies to subcontract with the city of Philadelphia. Over the years, in partnership with the city, we've developed a number of services. In FY15, LCFS provided services to over 15,000 individuals in the city. In February of 2016, the board made a very difficult decision to end all agency contracts with the exception of our contracts with PCA and our senior service center. Unfortunately, this decision will impact the lives of thousands in the city and remove a valuable, faith-based voice that has spent ninety-five years advocating for the needs of the most vulnerable. So you might question, "How did this happen?" The answer is relatively simple. DHS through the city contracting process has not kept up with the cost of services they contract for. In fact, I can cite several contracts where we received no increases in decades. In another twist of irony, in the past two years, we've needed to request a waiver from the living wage mandate to continue funding our after-school programs. This was necessary despite the fact that the agency put $100,000 into the programs and the city only covered 95% of the true cost of care. Consequently, the agency has had to find more dollars to cover the costs of both mandated and non-mandated services. With increases in expenses, this gap is more difficult to bridge. Finally, the board, in its fiduciary responsibility, said the cost of managing the mission outweighed the agency's capacity to do so. I realize that other agencies will step up and meet the service void, but this will only delay the inevitable, which is that the city will continue to lose valuable community-based agencies like Lutheran unless it changes its business practices and begins to understand that the mission-driven nonprofits are businesses and need to be treated and paid like other businesses. Expecting funding gaps to be covered by dwindling donor base is an inadequate response to community need.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for your testimony. Not sure what some of these individuals are testifying about. I think I know about the next one. Janine Litschke, Sarah Stewart. Sarah here? All right. Must be about bicycles. Let's see, Sarah. And Jana Tilwell? Jana Tilwell? She's not here? I thought it was connected to the bicycle lady, AAA, the car. Nah. All right. Okay, we're good. Good, good evening. Yeah, please.
Good evening. My name is Janine Litschke, President of Women Against Abuse. We appreciate the ongoing support of City Council in addressing concerns of family violence. It is important to highlight the significant gap in funding that Women Against Abuse is facing as we struggle to ensure critical services in our two safe havens, Amelia's Place and Carol's Place. Women Against Abuse had seen a cut of nearly $300,000 in fiscal year '08 to its Amelia's Place Safe Haven contract with the Office of Supportive Housing. The full operations of the Philadelphia Domestic Violence Hotline are also included in this contract. We've had to both reduce services and raise unrestricted private funding to cover the shortfall. This is not sustainable. Unfortunately, this gap was further exacerbated when we opened the city's second safe haven for survivors of domestic violence, Carol's Place, and received only a portion of the total amount identified by City Council, leaving a gap each year in this contract as well. In the midst of flat funding and budget cuts, we are overwhelmed with the increased request for services. Without adequate funding for our safe havens, we will have to scale back these critical services. In order to respond to this unmet need, we are fully committed to implementing the citywide plan to address domestic violence, which we have taken a leadership role in. The overall goal being that no matter where a victim turns for help, that they will receive it, whether it's child welfare, behavioral health, the homeless system. We will continue to advocate for support to respond to this critical unmet need, knowing that intervening in family violence is foundational to the health of our community. We ask that you just continue to remember victims of violence and their children in the budget process and as they seek safety and freedom, and thank you for your support.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you, Council President Clark and honorable council members. My name is Sarah Clark Stewart. On behalf of the Bicycle Coalition of Greater Philadelphia, I'm here to testify on three related subjects. First, I want to testify in support of the Streets Department fiscal '17 budget of nearly $24 million for resurfacing. This represents an increase of $3.821 million over the last year's estimated obligation of $20 million. This budget would provide the department with the largest amount of funding for resurfacing since 2009, and that's significant. It would allow the department to increase the number of miles of streets it repaves on an annual basis. But this level, the proposed increase, will bump that figure up to 55 miles in the next season. But this level is only one-third of what the city needs to repave annually to keep the 2,575 miles of streets in good state of repair. The resurfacing budget needs to be doubled in order to approximately $55 million a year at least in order to achieve 130 miles repaved annually. This is the figure that's understood to be necessary in order for the city to achieve a good state of repair. And that repaving budget needs to go hand-in-hand with additional capital funding for new equipment and additional operating funding for labor forces. It is impossible for an under-resourced transportation division of the Streets Department to deliver safe streets in good condition, no matter how large the paving item. I urge council to work with the administration to continue to increase the paving budget and the appropriate labor forces in order to achieve 130 miles per year repaved. Why does the Bicycle Coalition care about this? Because when streets are repaved and made into complete streets to accommodate all users through traffic calming and safety measures, they help Philadelphia reduce the number of people killed and injured every year. Nearly 100 people die in motor vehicle crashes, and this has to end. This is why Vision Zero is so important, and we urge the administration and council to work together to... to work together to implement a Vision Zero policy. Lastly, let me just say that we are very much in support of the effort to create a bond fund that would enable the city to borrow capital dollars to rebuild and re-repair parks, recreation centers, and libraries. This bond fund would make otherwise scarce funds available for trail construction, which would be highly leveraged by state and federal funding. The proposed rebuild Philadelphia would be a game changer for trail development, and we are in support of that.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for my testimony.
Next up, we have Locosta Laura, Michael Banks, Dr. Stan Milwell, or Mill, Mariana Chilton, and Robert Purvis. Go through them one more time. Are there still people? Well, are there still people across the hall? Are there still people across the hall? Okay. I'm gonna go through these names one more time. Where was that? Locosta Laura, Michael Banks, Dr. Stan Milwell, Mariana Chilton, and Robert Purvis. Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, President Clark. I'm a member of city council. My name is Locosta Laura, and I work with ARP. I am the Associate State Director, and I am here representing ARP and also advocating for the Vision Zero with the Bicycle Coalition. And everybody may ask, why ARP is here with Vision Zero and the Bicycle Coalition? We support Vision Zero because ARP has a campaign called Liveable Community. Liveable Community advocates for a better transportation system, pedestrian, bicycling, and also the housing and workforce development. And we believe that working with Vision Zero and having a better transportation system and also a better safe community for the pedestrian will increase a safer city regardless of the age. I apologize. Will increase a safer city regardless of the age. ARP is also working nationally with Vision Zero in California, San Diego, Portland, and New York, and we have learned that when Vision Zero, the policy is implemented, the mortality rate goes down. For instance, we have a 43% reduction in mortality in Minnesota, 48% in Utah, 40% in Washington State, making each city, each state more friendly, open to business, open to the economic development. When Vision Zero is implemented through each, I'm sorry, to the policy, we can see how the business community is affected. Why? Because they're more welcoming, a better transportation system now only for the pedestrian but also for the community at large. And ARP advocates, and ARP advocates for the community, for a community development.
I'm sorry, we have a little confusion up here. You finished your testimony?
Okay, I thought you had a question for me.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
I haven't finished my testimony. I have another paragraph to go.
Okay. Yeah, we forgot to turn the clock on.
Okay. ARP, in collaboration with Vision Zero, understand that we set goal for, to eliminating traffic death, serious injury, and seek for multiple disciplinary approach, bringing together diversity stakeholders like traffic planner, engineering, policy offer, policymaker, and public health professional to address complex problems as a transportation system also, which is affecting the economic development of the small business community.
Thank you so much for your testimony, ma'am. Next up, our next panel is Kimberly Labno, Samantha Biano, Barbara Gold, and Misha Blocker.
Good afternoon, City Council.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Good evening, actually.
It is indeed. Thank you, sir. Good evening, and I see the clock is set. I'll be brief. My name is Kim Labno. I'm with Health Promotion Council. We're an affiliate of the Public Health Management Corporation, and I'm pleased to be here today to participate in this very powerful democratic process with folks from all sides of the issue. I feel that the good news here is that I'm hearing a lot of general consensus and agreement around the, about the interest and ability for people to live livable lives in Philadelphia with strong social services and social support. And I think where we're differing a little bit are the solutions and the ways we go ahead and address that. So I'd like to talk today a little bit about solutions and what could be possible bridges to link the industry group along with those interested in the health and welfare primarily. Briefly, I wanted to identify that businesses, including this beverage industry, have consistently identified that they want to start and sustain their business in livable cities with economic opportunities, and this is measured in intellectual capital, health, and safety. Early childhood programming, community schools, and after-school and a strong parks and recreation department are those assets that breed the qualities businesses want when they build and sustain a business. This brings jobs, this brings revenue. The second thing I'd also like to explore, perhaps at a later time, would be that the beverage industry themselves have already identified that they are switching over to different portion sizes, different formulas, to diversify their product offering, to sell more products, and generate revenue. Coca-Cola, for example, has done this in many others. I wonder if the small business community could entertain a conversation with industry about what could be done. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony, ma'am.
Hi, thank you, council. I've never been here before. This is a great room you guys get to work in. And I want to thank you for a chance to speak as just a citizen. I'm, my name is Nissa Blocker. I'm an endocrinologist. If you don't know what that is, I'm a doctor who treats diabetes. So you can tell which way I'm going with this, but I want to give you a perspective you might not have about what it is to be in a room with someone who's dealing with something. One, stopping sugary drinks actually does help. I've seen people lose five to 10 pounds. That's enough to delay diabetes for several years, and that's really important. Also, I've seen people get much better control of their diabetes from stopping sugary drinks. I have seen this happen, so regardless of studies, one-on-one. I also know that money affects behavior. We all know that. People have cut back on cigarettes and stopped smoking because it costs too much money. People also stop taking their insulin and their medications because it costs too much money. So it's a sad thing, but money does affect behavior. Finally, willpower is not enough. Everybody in this room knows that, you know, you get that extra piece of cake, then you feel guilty. Everybody knows that willpower is not enough. If it was, probably a majority of people in here would weigh at least five pounds less, myself included. And it's not just physical health that we're talking about, it's mental. Too often, I walk into a room to see a diabetic, we close the door, and the first thing they say is, "Doc, I've been bad." We're talking a grown human being talking, saying they've been bad like they are in kindergarten. And so now they have a chronic illness, and they have guilt and personal shame. And what do we do to support them? We give them unhealthy beverages on every corner, every store, every restaurant, even the hospital cafeteria, I'm sorry to say. We make it harder for them. We make it harder for them to make healthy choices. So remember that willpower is not enough, money affects behavior. So I know that people join the city council to help people, to help others, to help the community, and so I just want to ask you that as you consider all the factors involved, to please also consider what your heart tells you about this. This may be an opportunity to help other human beings. And if one person delays diabetes for two years because of this, you have definitely done something good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what is this here? This right here, right? This last one? That's the, 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 the call, right? She'll be one person, she'll hear the next one. The next group. Jake Leifer, Sheila Harper, Wade Alberts, Erica Jones, and Yolanda James.
Hi, my name's Jake Leifer. I'm with the Fifth Square Group that engages constituents in local elections, supports important initiatives, and advocates that all residents are provided with safe public space. We stand with the hundreds of supporters here today and fully support Mayor Kenny's proposal for funding universal pre-K and parks and rec centers through this soda tax. This will fund much-needed programs and capital improvements that are essential to our families, children, and residents. We know that without these necessary improvements in infrastructure, children will continue to be subjected to the dilapidated and unsafe equipment, facilities, and public space. Furthermore, we have seen far too many hidden runs with children injured and killed right next to our parks and schools. It is essential that our children, some of the most vulnerable residents, have the safety, facilities, and education they need. We stand with Mayor Kenny on this important initiative. We believe through street safety calming programs, starting with improvements in and around parks and rec centers and schools, we can ensure that our children, who are now able to attend quality pre-K and rec centers, are provided with the safety that they need. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Jones. I'm 15 years old, and I work with Philadelphia Parks and Recreation. And in the summer, I work with American Legion, and the park is really, it's not in good condition, the swings are bad, the basketball courts have no nets, and the basketball courts are messed up, and the slides have no slides, and there's graffiti. And if you pass this proposal for the soda tax, then we'll have more money for our park, and it can be better for everybody, all the kids and all the workers and working. And when I worked, I learned a lot, and I learned how to work in the workforce, and it made me a better person and a better student.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good evening. I am Sheila Harper, and I am President of the Asia Adams Save Our Children Foundation. Asia Adams was my only child, and she was killed the result of teen dating violence, which is one of the number-one causes of death for young women between the ages of 16 and 24. We have been involved in the health and welfare of children for a while. I am here to speak on a few things, some things that I have observed regarding the COA. One of the things, there are some organizations such as Children's Service, Inc., CSI, Women's Krishna Alliance, they are the oldest foster care agencies in the city. Underneath this COA, they have all been defunded. Children's Service, Inc. went from 700 kids, maybe children about maybe five years ago, to like 15. Okay? And they are about to close. There seems to be a targeted thing towards minority-owned nonprofits. There was just a report that was put out last week about minority-owned nonprofits. The struggle is outrageous in terms of the fight for money. Prior to the recession, the city was contracting with smaller nonprofits like Asia Adams Foundation. At the time, they did not know it was me because I have been a very strong advocate for health in the past, in my past life. At this point, I am seeing that the COAs, they say, it's like a dog and pony show. You know, you go to these meetings and you present your program, and everybody loves your folder, and then they don't call you back. They don't do anything. And not only that, one of the main things that I'm noticing about the COAs, they're not contracting with anyone. It's almost like we've condensed it into some large conglomerate organizations. I am deeply concerned, one of the earlier COAs, I have observed their staff leaving, okay, as a result of this whole COA situation, and they're being overwhelmed. I am deeply concerned about that. I am deeply concerned about what's happening with minority nonprofits. I heard Green the other day speak relative to nonprofits and a certification process that used to be in place with MBEC. Okay, so that's one thing. And the other thing that is really huge in this city, and it's a whisper, and that is this PIPT study. It has to do with the Temple University area, and gunshot victims and stab victims will not be treated with IV.
Right.
They will not be treated with intubation because, unless they opt out.
Right.
Well, that feels funny. It feels like Tuskegee. What do you mean you're not going to be treating a well-known treatment to people in minority communities? That is deeply concerning. I am concerned about the IRB process. I have asked about it, and everybody's very quiet. I think city council needs to be very much aware of that situation and deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, ma'am. Give us a couple of minutes. The next panel is Dawn McKay, Dean Castellas, Jessie Goldman, Jill Fink, and Kyle Saret. Evening.
Good evening.
You guys can self-select. Who's first?
Okay. Good evening. My name is Dawn McCray, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm here on behalf of communities and schools of Philadelphia. We have been in the community for more than 30 years, and I am here in support of Mayor Kenny's budget as well as the soda tax. As you know, our young people have done As you know, our young people have done without for a long time, and at this time, they cannot wait any longer to do without. We are one of the largest community-based organizations in Philadelphia, and it was so refreshing to know that both you and Mayor Kenny looked at initiatives that were actually research-based, that could actually make a difference in the schools. And so the dollars that are going to support these initiatives would be dollars that would be very well-spent. Universal pre-K, universal pre-K is well overdue, and the community schools initiative is definitely needed in our schools because they have, you know, done without for so long, that now is the time to really step up to the plate and help our schools out. We're at a catalyst, you know, it's a really turning point, and we cannot wait another five or 10 years to see if, you know, doing nothing is going to make a difference. Because doing the same thing results in insanity expecting a different result. We have to do something different on behalf of our children, on behalf of our teachers, on behalf of our communities that have done without resources for so long. So I implore you to really take a long, hard look at supporting Mayor Kenny's bill. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, my name is Dean Costellas, and I'm here tonight as a director of coaching. I'm an executive director of Palumbo Soccer Club in South Philadelphia. We are a 300, about 300-player organization with a great parent base, very supportive, a lot of experienced and certified coaches, and an administration that really makes the experience for our players and parents, um, great all the way around. The one thing that we really can't control, and it's an uphill battle at all times, is the quality of field space that we play on. Substandard's a really nice way to put it, deplorable is probably more accurate. We practice in actually in pretty nice neighborhoods. We're at Columbus Square on 12th and Wharton, we're at Palumbo Rec Center at 10th and Fitzwater, and we're at 6th and Lombard at Star Garden. We practice five nights a week at Columbus, and regularly, we have two, three, four players leave our training sessions injured because there's no grass on the field. It's rocks, it's dirt, it's boulders, it's gravel and glass. We have, I can't even tell you the amount of sprained ankles, I stopped keeping count. We play our games at Palumbo Recreational Center, and by the way, all the rec center leaders at these places do a phenomenal job with their limited resources. They do. So we play our league games at Palumbo Rec, and before each game, we have to tell the referee and the opposing coach that on the Bainbridge side of the field, within the 18-yard box, they have to watch out for the boulders that are actually coming up from the ground underneath. The problem is, we can't excavate them because if we do, we've been told that maybe we'll find something much worse and they'll have to close the field for a year or more, and we all know how that goes. So at the end of the day, you know, the kids in our community and the kids in our club, they should be afforded the same, the same quality fields that kids in other communities all, all around our area and all around the country are. So we're in support of Mayor Kenny's bill, and I thank you for our time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Kyle Saret. I'm the director of education for the Center for Popular Democracy. I'm representing Center for Popular Democracy and Action United in support of the sugary drink tax. For anyone who's attended a failed school or a school that struggles, and anyone who knows anyone who's struggled these schools, then we know that there are things that can transform these schools. And one of the things that can transform schools from struggling to, um, high-performing is the community school strategy. There's a school in Baltimore, Wall Street Academy, it used to be ranked number 77. Today, it's ranked number two. They used a community school strategy a good five years ago, and now they're, uh, performing quite well. The whole city of Cincinnati decided in 2001 to use a community school strategy to succeed. It was the lowest-performing urban district, um, in Ohio. And then in 2010, it became the first urban district to get an effective rating. The whole state of Kentucky used to be ranked 49th in the country. Now it's ranked 27. There are 1,000 community schools in Kentucky. Reagan and Webb High School in Austin, Texas, both were the lowest-performing Title I schools in that city. Today, they're the highest-performing Title I schools in the city. Cities, districts, all across the country are using the community school strategies to transform their struggling schools into thriving schools. We, we at the Center for Popular Democracy and at Action United, um, believe wholeheartedly that the city of Philadelphia should invest using the sugary drink tax to transform its struggling schools into thriving schools.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Jill Fink. I'm the owner of Mugshot's Coffee House, a founding B Corporation and member of the Sustainable Business Network of Greater Philadelphia. Mugshot's has proudly been serving Philadelphians since 2004 and employs 15 Philadelphia residents. As a small business owner, I'm here today to voice unwavering support for Mayor Kenny's proposed tax on sugar-sweetened beverages. As a triple-bottom-line business, all of Mugshot's decisions are guided by a commitment to people, profit, and planet. In keeping with these values, you will not find the usual lineup of sodas and sugary beverages at Mugshot's. We do not sell anything with high-fructose corn syrup, though many of the teas and juices we sell would be subject to this tax. Despite this, I remain strongly in favor of this levy. This tax may not prove to be in my financial interest to support as a business owner, but it does benefit the health of my fellow Philadelphians and is consistent with my personal and business values. Indeed, the distributor from whom we purchase our beverages has encouraged me to oppose this tax, and despite higher costs, I'm not concerned about the impact to my financial bottom line or to the bottom line of the other businesses that have encouraged you to vote against this tax. Some customers will continue to purchase these items, some will forego the purchase altogether. I opened a business to benefit my community, not to make money for myself at the expense and health of my fellow residents in the community I serve. I would be pleased if I were to sell fewer of these beverages. Of course, the third possibility is that customers will choose an alternative beverage that is not sugar-sweetened. However, one alternative that Mugshot's customers will not have is that of a diet beverage. As supportive as I am of this tax, I'm disappointed that diet beverages are excluded. Oh, no, no, wait, I'm getting to the good stuff. Just give me, like, okay. Um, the implication is that diet beverages are a healthier alternative, which is misleading and at worst insidious manipulation. Speaking of insidious manipulations, you've heard from a well-funded beverage lobby with fancy signs and T-shirts and primetime ads that has misleadingly dubbed this a grocery tax. The same industry aggressively targets low-income communities, especially children and teens of color, with advertising that promotes the sale of these products. These same communities suffer disproportionately from the negative health outcomes associated with consumption of these beverages.
Okay. Yeah, didn't sound like you were wrapping up. Ma'am.
In closing, can I just say, Philadelphians have been the first in this country for a lot of things, including fattest in the nation. We're a population that is poorer and less healthy than the national average. I hope that members of council will capitalize on this opportunity, be the first major city to enact this levy that puts people before profits, and to be a city that sets a precedent and puts the health of its citizens.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Clark and city council members for giving me this opportunity to speak to you in support of the sugary drinks tax. I'm Jesse Goldman, a practicing physician in Philadelphia since 1989 and a specialist in hypertension. At Drexel's, excuse me, Hypertension Center, I see people every day suffering from preventable stroke, heart disease, kidney damage, due to obesity-related hypertension. I want you to know that physicians are completely outgunned by big soda. We need your help. In my office, my message is simple: excess calories will make you sick. We all know this: obesity, hypertension, diabetes, fatty liver. So, so what's the problem? It's that soda sells a lifestyle, and versus the constant emotional advertising, doctors just can't make any headway. Drink me, you'll be happy and healthy, it's magic. No, it's marketing psychology, and it works. A key appeal of this tax is that it teaches families that soda is the opposite of a healthy choice. And not everyone knows this. A sugary drink is a wolf hiding in sheep's clothing. It masquerades as nutrition. This wolf hunts everyone but targets the young and the poor. Soda companies targeting poor neighborhoods is not a coincidence. Versus their marketing onslaught, an occasional doctor's visit, and just maybe mixed in with everything else I tell people, don't drink hundreds of extra calories. Dr. Goldman with one brief chance every few months versus a media blitz by big soda? It's really no contest. So thank you by supporting the sugary drink tax and voting your, I think you're supporting grassroots education of communities to build a healthier life, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you all very much. George Bezanas, hope I pronounced your name correctly, Danny Grace, Todd Kelly, Scott Kemp, and Nate Ex- Exdut.
Who should I give my copies to?
What do you need? Copies?
All right, I'll leave them there. My name is George Bezanas. I'm speaking to you today as a social studies teacher from Central High School, where I serve as the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers' representative at the school. I'm also a member of the PFT's Caucus of Working Educators. Hopefully, you read my op-ed in today's Daily News. As I wrote, "I have serious concerns that the mayor's plan to expand universal pre-kindergarten to every Philadelphia child will not achieve what it is designed to do. The mayor's proposal would effectively reinvent the wheel. The Philadelphia School District is currently the largest provider of pre-K in the city, serving about 9,000 three- and four-year-olds. Instead of providing additional resources for the district's nationally-recognized pre-K program, the administration wants to expand the use of outside, non-unionized, private providers, providers that have often had a questionable track record and pay their employees poverty-level wages. This approach continues a disturbing trend begun in 2013, when the district started outsourcing thousands of pre-K seats away from the PFT. Built as a cost-saving measure, it expanded the low-wage workforce the mayor is seeking to double down on. In addition, I have concerns about the revenue source the mayor is relying on to fund these proposals. If policy objectives like quality, universal, pre-K are priority, and I believe they should be, then we as a city should also find a dependable source of revenue. For example, many members on this body, including over there Councilwoman Canyona Sanchez and Councilwoman Gim, have long advocated for an increase in the use and occupancy tax on large commercial and industrial property owners. According to your own research, these corporations saw a profit of nearly $100 million in tax cuts as AVI was rolled out in 2013. As another option, the city has consistently neglected to pursue pilot's payments from some of the wealthiest nonprofits in the country. The University of Pennsylvania alone sits on an endowment of over $10 billion. Instead of asking our local multimillion-dollar corporations and some of the wealthiest nonprofits in the country to pay their fair share for a worthy cause, one second, we are once again solely discussing the passage of a regressive tax that will target the working men and women of this city, a tax that will then be used to destroy even more middle-class union jobs through quick fixes and half measures."
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Good evening.
Thank you for letting me, uh, speak with you tonight. Um, I'm, my name's Todd Kelly. I am the, um, the director of the plant, uh, for Pepsi up on the boulevard. Uh, I've been, been here for six years and been partnering with this guy right here next to me to, to create good, middle-class, uh, union jobs in the city of Philadelphia. I want to give you a little bit of a different perspective on this soda tax. Um, you know, the business industry itself is, is hard. It's hard to do business out there today, and I see that every day when I look out the window of my office and see the big Nabisco plant that's right across the street from our facility, it is an empty shell, okay? Jobs, they didn't need your help to, to go under, okay? The, the tax here in, the soda tax here in Philadelphia will put an undue burden on our industry and our workers. Look, the face of PepsiCo is not me, it is the people that are, that are here, all right? The jobs that are created by PepsiCo in this, in this city. Um, these are the people that are going to be hurt by this tax. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
My name is Nate Exdut. I own a small wholesale operation in West Philly, and I have been in business in Philadelphia my entire life. My parents owned a business, a grocery store, for 50 years, and I also have been in the grocery, beer distributor, all kinds of businesses in Philadelphia. I've never seen anything like this. This is, I feel like I'm being attacked, we're all being attacked. I understand, we're all for pre-K and fixing recreational centers, but does it all have to be on the grocer's back? It's just, it doesn't make any sense. When they, when they put the cigarette tax into effect, they cut the legs out from our industry. To this day, we have people out of business, employees laid off, and there's no end in sight if this soda tax goes through. I don't care what economists say, or surveys, or studies, I know what happens when you raise taxes to that extent in Philadelphia. They go right outside the city. I, my, I have a lot of grocers that are a few blocks away from the border, and what do they do? The people go to their stores and they buy everything there. They just don't buy soda or cigarettes, they buy all the things there because they're there. And this has been going on for a year and a half already, and now they want to put this on us, and it's just going to be a disaster. I can tell you that because I have 10% of my customers, cigarette customers, outside the city, do almost as much business as the other 100 that I do inside the city. So that tells you where the money's going to go. They're just going to walk a few blocks or drive seven or eight blocks and buy it outside the city. As far as health concerns, that's an issue for another day. You're not going to stop people from smoking or, or drinking soda if they really want to do it. It's, it's just not going to happen. They're just going to travel a few blocks and get it. I've seen it over and over. I've been around long enough, I don't, I'm, I have practical experience, and I know what's going to happen because I've seen it. There's no question about it.
Thank you.
Good evening, council president and council members. My name is Danny Grace, Secretary Treasurer at Teamsters Local 830, and a proud 41-year member and employee of Pepsi-Cola. Yes, I did raise my family working at Pepsi-Cola in a good, family-sustaining job, raised four children on that. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. We oppose this sugary drink tax, and the members of Teamsters Local 830 are proud to be joined in the fight by a coalition consisting of 1,017 businesses and 12,537 individuals. Let's be clear. What the city is proposing, a tax of three cents an ounce on any beverage that contains sugar, three cents per ounce, not per bottle, that includes not only your favorite sodas, but also fountain drinks, kids' juice drinks, lemonade, apple cider, mixers, mixes, flavored milk, iced tea, iced coffee, enhanced water, energy drinks, sports drinks, and other sugar-sweetened beverages that family enjoys every day. If sugar is the enemy, then tax all sugary products and spread the pain over many industries, not just one.
Thank you.
The, the mayor is basically saying their business on beverages is going to be down 55%. We're saying that's up, going to be up to 85%. So, and their business, they have about 60% of their businesses in beverages. What business do you go and you tell them they're going to be down 60%? Of the, 60% of their business is going to be 85% down. They'll end up laying off jobs. Those same people pay property taxes. Those same people pay sales taxes. The other piece is it's an unstable revenue stream and that goes to the point of the company employees that will let go and the businesses that will shut down. And of those businesses, I'll guarantee you there's thousands of businesses within, within this city that will shut down. And then finally, this is one of the, this, you will create one of the biggest black markets for soda if this passes. I've seen what's happened in New York, New Jersey in terms of deposit and that's only a buck 20. This, you're talking $14 on a case of soda. You'll have so much product that will move in from New Jersey and from the counties that will just get avoided. And then finally, my final point-
The second time you said finally.
I know, sorry. My final point is, uh, frankly, I'm kind of tired of hearing about big bad soda.
I understand.
And we're in your communities, we're donating our time, we're donating our money to these charities out there and I approve those every day.
Thank you. Thank you all for your testimony. And the last name is Molly Machay. Molly Machay is the last name. Ms. Machay, going once, going twice. So, all right. All right, I want to thank you all very much for a spirited and equitable conversation is a very difficult issue, uh, but we will make a decision. Thank you very much for your testimony. This committee will stand at recess until Tuesday, May 10th, 2016 at 10:00 a.m., which time we will reconvene in room 400 City Hall. Thank you all very much.[1495.62]